Everybody, and thank you very much for attending and welcome to those of you listening online. You are aware the capacity here is limited, hence non-cabinet councillors being asked to join, hence non-cabinet councillors being asked to join remotely. This is a meeting for the public. At our budget consultation on Monday, I had the opportunity to run through with residents what the agenda should be for this evening. The answer, number one item for discussion: how do we save Catness Sports Centre? We know the huge value and positive impacts that come from active lifestyles. We also know the pre-pandemic model for leisure provision is challenging to deliver at a time of rising and unpredictable costs. Our business is not propping up one leisure provider with your money. Our business is enabling a cohesive approach to leisure, one that thinks county, one that ensures our most vulnerable residents get what they need whilst communities feel engaged and empowered to work together to shape provision. Rutland County Council's job is to enable that. Discussions and engagement around what leisure might look like in a post-pandemic world have been going on since 2020. Stevenage Leisure's contract was due to end in 2021. Cabinet agreed to underwrite costs and extend the contract in the short term due to the pandemic and dramatic utility price increase. We are at the end of the contract extension. To extend this contract would have served only councillors by moving the same difficult decision until after the May elections. This was an incredibly tough decision to take, not least because it was commercially sensitive and so therefore restricted from the public. We acknowledge this has caused considerable upset and anxiety. We are here this evening to answer all the many questions received. Thank you for taking the time to do that. We have briefed these questions and we will provide answers to those now from the Cabinet to maximise time for you to ask questions through the floor. I'll just introduce the Cabinet and then I will hand over. We have councillor Mark Oxley, who is the Cabinet portfolio for Communities, Environment and Climate Change; councillor Rosemary Powell, who is deputy leader responsible for planning, transport and highways; councillor Sam Harvey at the end there, who is our portfolio holder for health, wellbeing and adult care; councillor Karen Payne, Finance, Governance, Performance, Change and Transformation; councillor David Willbe, Education and Children's Services. My role, as many of you know, is that of leader and I have Policy, Strategy, Partnerships and Economy sitting in my portfolio. First of all, I will hand over to councillor Oxley, who has leisure in his portfolio and he will talk about the current contract arrangements with Stevenage Leisure.
Thank you Chair, and again, thank you all for coming this evening. So I will be talking to you about the current contract with Stevenage Leisure Limited. A number of people have sent in questions. They want to know more about our current contract arrangements and the amount of support the council has given to Stevenage Leisure to run the Catness Sports Centre since it was built. The original contract with SLL started in April 2011 and was for 10 years until 2021. Due to the pandemic, the contract procurement process was stalled and the agreement with SLL was extended twice, each time for a year. The extensions were entirely legal and above board and took the contract end date to the 31st of March 2023. And that is why the council has had to decide on the future use of the sports centre now. The leader will say more about that decision itself shortly after. The council's contract with SLL was always intended to be net zero cost in terms of impact on our revenue budget, but that did not mean that we had to give zero financial support to SLL, far from it. Whilst we gave no financial support payment to SLL before Covid, the council has paid for capital works on the site. And between 2020 and 2022, the council has given SLL more than £300,000 of support payments and will pay up to £100,000 for this current year. And that doesn't include £57,000 of Sporting England funding or £42,000 of covenant grants to SLL since 2020. All these figures are in the public domain and are published on our website. And this gives a clear indication of the kind of financial support needed to run a leisure centre at the moment. So I'll have two more points to address before handing over to councillor Payne. The question was asked about how often we review SLL's performance, and it is done twice a year. We were asked if there was an agreement that said the Catness Sports Centre should be accessible to the public for 21 years, and the answer is yes. A deed of dedication was signed with Sporting England from 2008, but we can't maintain public access without a viable operator. I'm afraid the details cannot be made public as they are part of a legal agreement between us and Sporting England. So now, hand over to my colleague, Karen, who will talk about budget and finances.
Thank you councillor Oxley. Following on from what councillor Oxley's just talked about, a number of you asked questions about the council's wider financial position and spending, which I'll answer now. You asked why spending on Catness Sports Centre is considered excessive when RCC overall budget is £42 million. It's not just the amount of money spent, it's also the amount of risk going forward at a time when all costs are going up and the future is very uncertain and hard to predict. All councils are under immense pressure. Rutland County Council has a large funding gap and must reduce its costs by £4.9 million over the next four years. Leicestershire funding gap, just to illustrate, that of our neighbours, is a staggering £140 million by 2026. We must reduce our costs so we can keep delivering statutory services, universal services and services that help all 41,000 residents right across the county. Recently, council has been in a position where suppliers have asked for additional funds, that is, funds above the agreed contract values, and they've threatened to walk away from contracts leaving services unable to continue. RCC has stepped in repeatedly to protect services for our residents. This includes, as you heard from councillor Oxley, leisure. When you see the financial support that's gone into Catness Sports Centre and considering the cost of running a leisure centre, I expect it to go up by a further 240% this year, hopefully you will see it's no small matter. It's a financial risk we are not prepared to take. This is why net zero cost to our revenue budget is so important within our contract specifications. We will still be paying contract, sorry, we will still be paying capital costs for major repairs and business rate contributions. We cannot have open-ended revenue costs if the operator makes a loss or we are sharing risks around things like energy bills. We cannot give a detailed account of SLL operating costs, as some of you have asked, because it's commercially sensitive information. We've asked how much the college and sports centre, sorry, you've asked how much the college and sports centre cost to build. The whole Catness rebuild cost was £29.86 million, of which £5.3 million was sports facilities. You can see full details in the 2009 report, which can be accessed through the revised set of FAQs that have been sent to you and are on our website. No Section 106 monies were used in this, because Section 106 only came in after 2010, after the construction was already underway on the college. There are questions about levelling up in the local plan, which I'm going to ask councillor Powell on my left to answer, before handing back to councillor Oxley to pick up your questions on the procurement process.
Thank you. Good evening everybody. Yeah, in my portfolio, there's been a number of questions raised about the use of other funds to use towards a new or continue to run a sports centre. Specifically around the bidding for the levelling up fund monies, which were recently announced by the government and which awarded Melton and Rutland some £23 million, of which £12 million to Rutland. Also around the use of monies to fund the local plan and the use of developer contributions from the new houses being built in our county. So firstly, on the levelling up fund bid. This was a programme, it was a government grant with strict conditions attached, which could be applicable to support viable projects around transport, regeneration and culture. So Rutland needed to provide evidence to support the bid and we tailored it to those themes where we had a strong case. In particular, transport, which is particularly important in a rural area, getting people around inside and outside the county to all sorts of places and facilities, including leisure. Councillor Payne has talked about current financial challenges with operators backing out of contracts leaving the council to foot the bill. This is typical of transport and bus operators and we therefore need the levelling up fund money for a new kind of transport service. Other areas across the country did include some sports and leisure facilities in their regeneration bids, but we had to focus on the evidence of need relating to Rutland, which we did. And the fact that we were successful, one of 111 successful bids at 539 submitted, that suggests that we did take the right approach. Second group of questions about allocation of monies to a local plan. You're probably aware that legally the council is required to have a local plan covering 15 years. We need to update and present a new local plan and update the evidence base and the policies to support this. My priority on coming onto Cabinet in May last year was to get this updated and a new plan put in as soon as possible and to minimise the cost of its preparation. But we do recognise that in this current environment, we are seeing costs escalate across all industries and sectors and therefore we have put additional monies aside in our reserves for the cost in the proposed budget for a new local plan. The third area question was around can we use developer contributions to keep Catness Sports Centre open? The council does hold monies paid by developers in three types of agreements. They're called Section 106 agreements, Community Infrastructure levies and the Open North monies, totaling just over £8 million at the end of December 2022. This is all set out in the infrastructure funding statement which is published on the website. While some of this money has restrictions on where and how it can be used, we do have discretion over other amounts of spend. And that is why you see if you looked, I brought up papers to Cabinet in December setting out some indicative allocations of these monies along with a process for administering the spend. We've made it clear that we need to invest in infrastructure, whether it's health, waste, transport, public spaces, recreation, affordable housing for all Rutland residents and we set out our priorities. All these areas are important and in line with our vision for the county. But this is a one-off pot and we need to be spending it wisely. You might have seen, if you've read those documents, that there is mention of monies for leisure and recreation in that paper and also a community grant scheme which will be launched in the next few months. This developer's money is for residents across the county, not just Oakham, providing specific investments to get projects going or to provide short-term support for leisure and recreation and not a long-term revenue commitment. I made a commitment to residents, and this is endorsed by Cabinet, that we will use the capital funds to improve the infrastructure needed to make Rutland the special place it is. We're laying the foundations of doing this and I look forward to seeing some of these detailed schemes coming forward. I'm now going to hand over to councillor Mark Oxley to talk through the procurement process.
Thank you councillor Powell. So a number of you asked questions wanting to know more about the procurement process and how we went about trying to find an operator to run the Catness Sports Centre after March 31st. The procurement process ran for just over three months, 99 days. It opened on the 29th of July 2022 and closed on the 4th of November 2022. The procurement work was supported by Welland Procurement, who specialise in running tender processes. Tender information, clarifications and submissions were undertaken using ProContract, a nationally recognised secure procurement portal which ensures that information is handled in a secure and legally compliant way. 16 companies expressed an interest in the procurement. Seven companies went on to participate in the process. Only one bid was received, which was not compliant. In light of one potential bidder asserting that they had submitted a bid, the process has been thoroughly checked and it has been confirmed that only one bid was received. We were asked how much the procurement process cost and if there was a net zero cost requirement. The cost was £50,000. There was a net zero cost requirement and, as already explained, this was for a very important reason. The council has always insisted on a net zero cost requirement from the start of the contract back in 2011. The question was asked with regards how far the tenders were from achieving nil cost specification. Any discussions with providers about procurement and contract specifications is still unfortunately commercially sensitive information, but it was over £100,000. And the risk to the council was potentially open-ended, as has been explained. As it was required to underwrite all the subsequent financial risks of the operation and not forgetting the successful bidder would have been required to run the contract for the next 10 years. Contracts of 10 years, as it enables a long-term approach, it spreads the risk long-term and gives security in planning a viable business model. And this is the usual time period for local government contracts. And this is why the decision put before the Cabinet on the 12th of January was so very difficult. And something the leader will now pick up in terms of answering your questions about this.
Thank you. Not unreasonably, there's been a lot of questions about how the decision was taken, the process and the structure of decision-making and within that, the role of Cabinet and of course of scrutiny. Rutland County Council, like the majority of councils, operates a cabinet leader model. The leader is elected before council and then appoints a cabinet. The Cabinet for Rutland has six members, each with a portfolio. You've met everybody this evening. Decisions are made by Cabinet. Some of these will need approval at full council. This is determined by our constitution. Our Cabinet meets once a month in public, as does full council. A very reasonable question is around is it right that six people can make decisions? It is important to understand how all councillors can be involved and engaged with decision-making, particularly those decisions that are taken by Cabinet alone. We have a committee called the Strategic Overview and Scrutiny Committee. The chair is elected at annual full council, as are the members of the panel. Any member can attend meetings however, and it is the custom that the chair allows non-panelled members to speak if they wish. The agenda is set by the chair. Cabinet members are called upon to attend meetings to be questioned and to engage in discussions about various topics as outlined in the agendas. The chair of scrutiny has the opportunity to present recommendations to Cabinet. There is an agenda writing for this at every cabinet meeting. We also have a mechanism in our constitution for the calling of decisions. This enables a decision to be revisited. All members are notified via email of forthcoming meetings, our forward plan, and are sent links to access all papers and agendas, including those restricted from public access. All members are also directly notified of decisions taken, including any that are exempt. This is to ensure there is plenty of time to consider calling in a decision. Scrutiny met in 2021 to discuss the leisure needs analysis report available online. This includes discussions about the fundamental ambition of meeting the leisure and recreation needs of the county rather than focusing on just one facility. This also included a recommendation of nil cost to the council for the leisure contract, which was included in a report from scrutiny to Cabinet on 16th of November. At the meeting of scrutiny on 13th of December 2022, this position had moved, as is noted by officers in the minutes. Cabinet however, did not receive a formal recommendation from this meeting. Councillors were notified of the decision on the 12th of January. No requests for a calling were received, nor were any questions asked about how to use this mechanism. It is fair to say it is the community that has led on response to this decision. All members of the Cabinet voted to not extend Stevenage Leisure's contract when it ends on the 31st of March 2023. I must be absolutely clear, Catness College was not a part of this decision, but we have been working together as tenant and landlord for many years, hence the confidence in being able to work together to ensure continued community group and club access after the 31st of March. There is no new information to suggest that Cabinet should revisit this decision. Your anger and your upset is absolutely noted and taken on board. It underlines just how and why this decision was so difficult to make. From the FAQs, it is also clear there is some confusion about the different councils. Oakham Town Council has its own budget and has various responsibilities, including your parks. Obviously, another really important element of this is around the health and wellbeing and so on. We have had the honour to councillor Harvey to talk through those elements of the FAQs.
Thank you. Good evening. So you won't be surprised now, I've had lots of questions about the impact of the decision. Many of them have been submitted to me directly and many of you have talked about the importance of physical and mental health and wellbeing, especially for our children. We knew that the decision would have an immediate effect on the centre's users and we have advocated from the onset that as much mitigation as possible be done. Change does always bring anxiety and upset. You've already heard about the proposed proposals being taken forward by the council and college with regards to community group access. This could not be progressed until we had made the decision on whether or not to extend SLL. That's not to say there are perfect facilities in Oakham and both councillor Willbe and councillor Stevenson will touch on them shortly. I've been asked how the loss of Catness Sports Centre is consistent with the health and wellbeing strategy passed by the Health and Wellbeing Board. I'm always encouraging people to read that document, probably people do, so I would please encourage you to read it. The essence of the strategy is people living well within our communities, but it doesn't specify that that can only be achieved through one provider. And in fact, it's important that we're not relying on one facility or provider. At the core of the public health offer in Rutland is that everybody active, everybody, sorry, everybody active every day, national initiative, which seeks to encourage active living and reduce sedentary behaviour throughout daily life. The council works to promote and support the health and wellbeing across a huge range of activities, including children's school sport, cycling efficiency, active and sustainable transport initiatives in our schools, park play, girls' football in schools, the Rutland Walking and Cycling Festival, to name just a few. The council is responsible for a wide range of public health interventions, including the weight management programmes, funding and health checks undertaken by health professionals, alcohol and substance misuse services, the sexual health services and many more. We're not ignoring our public health responsibilities by choosing not to extend our contract with SLL. We do a huge amount to support health and wellbeing across the county. What we cannot do though, is increase financial pressure on the council and risk these other services and more by continuing to subsidise a leisure centre in the absence of an operator who could commit to running a viable service without a blank cheque from the county council. I'm going to hand over to councillor Willbe and councillor Stevenson now to answer your questions about alternative provision in the county.
Thank you councillor Harvey. Good evening everybody. I'm responsible for education and children's services in the county. We are very blessed in this county to have three extremely good secondary schools. Catness Campus, the Uppingham Community College and not least Castleton College. And all those support the various communities in their particular area. We're also lucky to have both Oakham and Uppingham schools, private schools, within our midst to aid us with all the bits and pieces that go along with that. In Catness Campus, we have an extremely capable headmaster in Stuart Williams, who's not only a gifted headmaster, but he's also an extremely capable administrator and a businessman who can keep his school running on a tight line. And indeed, right this moment, he is running on a tight line because we have selected Catness, because it deals with more of our Rutland children than any of our other schools or expansion. And he is on a £5.5 million expansion to the school, which will take place over the coming year. So he's a busy, busy chap. He's also got Harrington sixth form and from the results that you have no doubt seen over the summer period, Harrington has done really, really well and we should be very proud of the results that they're getting. In Catness Campus, we have got a very good liaison, a good relationship and the continued use of the facilities at Catness will, I am certain, be continued under Stuart Williams and as the dust settles, you will find that you will be able to continue many of the things that you do already. If we go slightly further afield for alternative provision, I know that the Wildcamp setup will stop on the 31st of March, but we already have other providers. Sorry, you laugh.
Yes, I did.
We have other providers like Kaleidoscope and Alternative People who will step into that breach. And because I look after children's services, I'm also responsible for the Children's Centre and the Family Hub and my team will be working really hard to make sure that you have the facilities for alternative provision for looking after your children during the summer and Easter holidays. For those of you who want to know what provision is available, you will, I hope, be familiar with the Rutland Information Service, which is on the website. And those who have any difficulty with that and need to go further, if you get in touch with Early Education Support Team at rutland.gov.uk, they will be delighted to try and help you. Equally, we are just about to launch our annual childcare sufficiently as... Equally, we are just about to launch our annual childcare sufficiency assessment, and it's due out in the spring. So please, when you get that waved in front of you, take the time to fill it in and pass your information up so that our staff can improve their data and improve the service that they give to you. I'm now going to hand back to the leader to take this off.
Thanks very much. I've been very clear in interviews in the public domain, the emphasis on working with the school to ensure community and club access has to be a priority. We are clearly also aware that there are community access arrangements that we won't be able to support, such as a commercial gym. However, there are other options for private gym users through the independent operators or our private school, for example, the Oakham Leisure Club, which offers a range of sports and fitness facilities to the community. This provision may now grow even further in the absence of Catmas Sports Centre. To give you an example where this clearly is the case, Uppingham has never had a funded sports provision. The Uppingham School Sports Centre has grown its offer over the years. No doubt that's in response to need and demand. We are also encouraging people to get in touch with Active Rutland. The team is already talking to some Catmas Sports Centre users about studio space at the Oakham Enterprise Park, as well as other opportunities depending on requirements. With that, quite clearly, we are in for some change, but we absolutely need to work together to work out what those needs are and how we can support that. Clearly, thank you so much for listening to us. I appreciate that there are people with quite a few questions. I believe that we have a roving mic. We will answer those questions. I'm mindful that some of the answers you won't necessarily agree with, but we'll see how we get on. Do we have a roving mic? Ah, thank you very much. Yeah, I've got a first question in the front row.
Okay, at the beginning, your first opening statement was about listening to and consulting with. You did not consult with us as the members. Nobody has asked us whether we would be prepared to increase our membership costs, or whether the clubs would be prepared to spend a little bit more. So nobody came out to us around operating models. You didn't consult with us. So why wasn't that put to us, in the fact that to keep this provision going, may incur some additional costs to membership and to the clubs?
I'll answer that question now. Just to be really clear, in terms of what costs are charged, that isn't the council's responsibility. That is the responsibility of the contractor, Stephenich Leisure, to have looked at their business model and what they need to charge to the available business. In terms of the lack of consultation, in 2021, every single household received a letter through their door, which was inviting you to take part in our future Rutland conversation. That covered...
That's about active group.
Oh, hang on a second. Actually, I will beg to differ on that one. I will look it up on my iPad, but it wasn't just about housing. There were eight different themes, including leisure and recreation. We had about 576 responses. There were free text boxes, et cetera. However, what the takeaway for me from this is absolutely around how do you continue that conversation? What is the role of the councillors? I appreciate, I've also pointed out that this decision happened in restricted session because of the commercial sensitivities, and that did make it difficult. However, the engagement I have noted down is a takeaway. And next question, please.
Hi, so this one is directed at councillor Rosemary Powell. We are led to believe that you have a conflict of interest. Have you declared that conflict of interest? Because with Barnsley, who have leisure facilities which are just outside of the town of Oakham, they're currently, I believe, in process, those leisure facilities, they're nearing capacity, as are every single place in the area that you have suggested we go for leisure facilities. Be fit is at capacity. Oakham Enterprise Park has permanent access to gymnastics and to one of their martial arts classes. I don't believe that any of these were accounted for, and I don't believe that the conflicts of interest whilst making a decision on Cabinet were necessarily right that you should have been part of that.
Thank you for that question. Yes, I own a timeshare at Barnsley, which was declared on the register of interest. I am also an active badminton player at Catmas College Sports Club. There was no reason that that ownership of a timeshare at Barnsley actually was relevant to the discussion on the leisure contract.
And I think I will just add with that, we are all residents. We all pay our council tax. We all will be a part of our community doing various things. I'm a member of Uppingham Town Curriculum Club, et cetera. When we make decisions, it is looking at the whole county. We obviously also take advice with interests. The leisure needs analysis is worth looking at from 2021 because it covers a lot of those things. And there's a lady just...
Are you Catmas members? You just mentioned your work.
I live enough in my preferred choice of...
Any of your Catmas members?
My children actually go to school at Catmas, but I prefer to be my children.
That's different.
Okay, that is... Is it relevant to one decision?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Yes, I have a question. You have made a lot of comments about Rutland County Council being about the county and leisure facilities for the county and not therefore limiting its interest into one single place, so not just Catmas Sports Centre. However, Catmas Sports Centre is the only public provision for leisure, so therefore it's that or it's that. So surely that is your responsibility, although it is in Oakham.
So that is a really good point, a clearly popular point. I think that comes down to what the expectation is. Clearly, it is about accessing something. Is the issue that it has to be run by the council, or is it acceptable to access privately run provision? So for example, Uppingham hasn't had that luxury. There are over 50 villages in this county that don't have that luxury. I appreciate Oakham is the county town, but I think that's some, in terms of moving forwards, are you looking at wanting a 20-minute neighbourhood? That's quite interesting work that's been happening in various London boroughs, admittedly more urban-centric. However, I would suggest going forwards, that might be something that you want to explore, to see if it tested, to see if it could possibly work in a rural area. But we do have over 50 villages and another market town that does not have the luxury of public provision.
That's my point. That is exactly my point.
So would you agree that transport is very, very important then to it?
No.
I'll answer your question. The previous question answered about the capacity.
Oh, please, could we... What am I going to... Yeah, oh, sorry, the capacity question. Now, is within our leisure needs analysis? I would suggest that we need to go back and double check that. Clearly, where we are looking at the market filling gaps, there will be time to take to fill those gaps. So I have a gentleman in white t-shirt with blue t-shirts and glasses towards the back, Mr Ed George. Thank you. Can you put your hand back up again? Oh! I'm so...
I know, I know, I've got short hair.
I'm terribly sorry. I haven't got my white glasses with me. Sorry, I can't see that far back.
He said that we have the opportunity for consultations with the future Rutland, the thing that came to our doors in 2021. Can I just check? Within that, I mean, I thought that's in, and that said, were we happy with the provision? Were we happy with what was going on in Rutland? And at that point in time, we had Catmas. And Catmas is every single one of my needs. And so, yes, I ticked, I was happy with the provision. Should we have had that at the point when Catmas had been cancelled, I would not have been ticking that. So can I just say that I don't really feel that's a true representation of our views and of consultation?
Wow. Two thousand five hundred signatures would be more than five hundred.
And it's a 15.5 response rate, which is far better than your Rutland Future Rutland response rate.
So can I wait now? Could I know that the strength of feeling is very high in this room, and that is completely understandable? If we could just keep to me going around and apologies for my short eyesight, Mr Ed George will be moving to pointing, just to take everybody there. In terms of the future Rutland conversation, interestingly, that survey happened at a time when we were taking a decision about the swimming pool. So that's what we have. Certainly, but my point is, the swimming, my point is that the swimming pool came out in that, in terms of having a public swimming pool. I absolutely take your point with being happy with the provision when you were at the point of not knowing about that decision. I think there is something, and I have a notepad where I am taking away things, there is something that all councillors need to reflect on. This end contract has been in our knowledge for quite some time, and actually, there should have been that engaged. I engage with Rutland.
You want to engage with us, but you clearly haven't engaged with us. But you have things in your, in your knowledge that you haven't told us about yet. You are asking us to respond to surveys where we don't have that knowledge and you do, and you're taking what we're saying as being correct, because that's the knowledge that we have.
Yeah, and so you're... So now, could I just point out, please, that I am, I'm going to make sure that everybody has a chance to speak, and then if there are people who wish to speak again, I will come back to you. So, oh, I'm a person at the back, on my left hand side.
So my question is, at the beginning of this presentation, you said that the next year would be a hundred thousand pounds to keep it open. But we have like information that you paid Catmas College a hundred fifty thousand to get out of your lease early. There is your hundred thousand to keep it open for another year.
I think you're confusing the swimming pool with this particular one, and I believe that we're still in commercially sensitive areas. I will just check. So I'm taking, next question, Dan, jump, jump, yeah, well done. And I think, Mr Ed George, if you could give me a hand, seeing at what point hands go up for you. Thank you.
Hi there, so I've got a couple of points I want to make. One, initially you were just saying it's a luxury to have a sports centre facility, and that to me is a basic need. When I moved to Oakham, I came, well, before I chose to move to Oakham, I went to look at the sports provision, because for me, that was a basic need where I wanted to be. Second of all, I've got two questions. One, I'd like to know, is there any legal reason why this decision cannot be reversed?
So for us to revisit a decision, there needs to be new information, and as well, there is no new information. I think we need to be clear about disagreeing with the decision that we've taken and whether or not it was legally correct. This decision has absolutely been taken legally.
Okay, so that's fine if the decision was taken legally, but I think it's clear to say there is no legal reason why this decision cannot be revisited. It's purely ego, and a thing that you guys do not want to do, when the rest of Rutland is talking to you, to say that we would like you to reverse this decision.
And the petition says...
Can I, can I come in here? Can I come in here? We worked, we worked very hard to find a new operator after March 31st this year. We spent, we spent fifty thousand pounds, fifty thousand pounds, trying to find a new operator. We couldn't find an operator that was prepared to take it on without us writing a blank cheque. We did not know. That is, that is, that is the fact.
I understand that.
It's not about legal, it's about us not being able to actually engage with, we couldn't find anybody to take it on.
I understand that the open-ended risk is difficult, and that's not something you want to stay on. But at the beginning of the meeting, literally at the beginning of this meeting tonight, you said we could have extended the contract again to post my elections, but we didn't want to delay that decision. Why could this not have been extended for one further year? That would have limited your risk to one year, and there is money available for that one year. You're spending three hundred thousand pounds, or setting aside three hundred thousand pounds for the local plan, when you're already committed to spend two point three million pounds for the local plan. I'm sorry, you said that you've spent, I think, four hundred thousand pounds to date over the entire contract with SLL, which has been for over 10 years. So four hundred thousand pounds over that period, and yet you're not prepared to stump up for one further year, especially when your Scrutiny committee asks for this to be held on for two more years. I do understand that you're not going to hold for a year.
For the very simple reason, you'd be sat here in a year's time. There's a person on the, there's a person on the... Oh, yeah, that's my, Miss Freddie, the main person. I put the question forward about Wildcamp, which I don't actually think was answered. And the question was, at any point, was it discussed that Wildcamp would be taken away from everybody in Rutland? I've been emailing with David Willby. I've spoken to the council directly, as he said, followed the structure that you're supposed to follow, to ask for advice, to say, as of eight weeks' time at the Easter holidays, me and all the other parents that use Wildcamp have no childcare. Not one person has been able to give me one single provider that will do Monday to Friday, nine till five. The one for Kaleidoscope, which you sent me earlier, I spoke to Kaleidoscope directly, and they tell me that they're only open for two weeks of the summer holidays. That's it. There is nobody else. The childminders that are listed, some of them don't even work school holidays, some of them don't take older children. The one that's on the website only takes children up to four years old. Wildcamp is full at Christmas, that's 30 children a day, at a cost of twenty seven ninety five. One of the ones that's been recommended to me is in East Weston, for my two children to go, it costs me two hundred pounds a day. There was one in Belton in Rutland. There was another childminder that works three days a week, and then there's Oakham School that takes children of eight years and older. Mine are both under that. So I do not know what I'm going to do as of Easter holidays. I have nowhere to send them, and no one's given me an answer. It's a basic need. We can't go to work and leave our children at home. So what do we do?
Okay, I hear your plea, and thank you for your emails. You kept me going over the weekend quite well, and I know I got your... Sorry? We have had a constant discussion over the weekend and up to today, and I got your email...
Didn't it happen before this weekend, really, shouldn't it? When you were thinking about making the decision?
Sorry, I answered your email as soon as I got it. I put the, I put the note out to my team, and I said to you that, and you saw my note that I sent to my director of children's services this morning to check those things. Now, she came in with that note about Kaleidoscope. I looked at, I looked right the way through the information service to check all the bits and pieces. And I was also told that categorically, there is a new provider coming on that will not only take them from eight to fifteen, but we, you would be able to put your children in earlier. I've also been in touch with our early years people. Because I understand, I'm a grandfather with seven grandchildren, and I know how difficult it is to look after your children. And I know it's, it's a problem. The, um, we have a very good early years team. I will trumpet on their behalf, they work tirelessly to try and get things sorted out. I asked you if you would make sure you filled in the childcare sufficiency statement, which is just about to come out. And I promise you that over the next couple of days, I will go in deep to find out exactly what we've got. But we have got some time left before Easter. I know that you're, you're desperate, and we're working on it. And, you know, I'm sure that we will come up with an answer for you. I can't give you any more than that, I'm sorry. And I wasn't knocking you down earlier on, I'll be patronising.
Oh, sorry, can we keep, so we, can we keep these, that we've got, we will have plenty of time to take questions. Could you ask your question, please?
This is going to be put in place by Easter, is what we need to know. Because we are going to need to make plans, we can't all take, just take time and work.
I, I understand that. As I said, I will do my very best to get that squared away. Well, I can't give you any more than that, but I tell you, our team will work hard to try and find that solution for you.
You can't take that before now, you knew it was coming. Why, why is this lady really upset because she can't get her children into, into facilities Easter? That is absolutely disgraceful, you knew about it, you should have set everything out before you made the decision to climb this campus. It should have all been in place, that strategic plan, strategic plan, you have no strategy to this at all.
So what, I, I understand that point completely, so I will come to, come to you, I am just picking up on that one. Oh, excellent, good. Um, with this, there was a huge amount of commercial sensitivity. So going and speaking to other commercial providers, when Stephen and Isla had staff also to consider and to deal with, that was the position, and I am, that that was the position. So that, that's pretty, pretty much a, a short answer, but an accurate one.
There's been a lot of talk today on the radio and this evening about change being anxiety inducing and difficult. It does not need to be anxiety inducing or difficult, that's a situation that's been created. When we ask about being wanted to be consulted, we don't want to have filled out a survey two years ago when Catmas was working. We want to be consulted now, that's why we're here. We want to find a solution with you. But what you've done is you've talked at us, you've made excuses for what's happened, and you don't seem willing to work with us. So you've got nine hundred members who still want to have somewhere they can go to an exercise class. And the response was to release a statement to the press that said that everything was shutting. You've got all the people that run the sports club, and the response was to say to the press, everything ends on the 31st of March. What needed to happen at that point was that you started a conversation with us. You didn't do that, that's why people are really upset. That's why they put loads of time into trying to save a community that they love. And I think one of the things that hasn't been got is that there's huge value in physical activity for our bodies, for our minds. But Catmas is also a place where people make friends, where they talk about the problems that they have with other people, and where they join together, and it feels like that's been ripped out. So talk to us now about building a solution and saying quite simply that another commercial operator, whether it's for Wildcamp or a Wildcamp equivalent, or whether it's for the gym or move into the space, doesn't make this community feel like, one, we've been thought about, two, we've been consulted, or three, we're going to have anywhere to go on the 31st of March. Because clearly, a new commercial operator is going to take longer than that.
Can I, can I say, first of all, with regards to the commercial element, to, everybody's, everybody this evening has been saying, or wondering why we weren't able to speak to you about the commercial side to the arrangements that we had. If we were to divulge to you commercially sensitive information, we would not be able to go to any company in the future and ask them to help us when it came to securing a contract. We have to ensure that the companies that come to us are going to be confident in the, in the, in the fact that the information will not be shared with anybody else. Because they are commercial, they are commercial operations. With regards to, with regards to the timescales, as the leisure, as the portfolio of the leisure, I can promise you that I have been pushing as much as I can to get the information out. But we do not own the building. Catmas College owns the building, so we have to talk to them. We are not the commercial provider. SLL is the commercial provider, so we have to talk to them. And when you've got those two elements being brought into it, so you ask one question, and they say, we'll get back to you next Tuesday. And then you go to them on Tuesday and say, we haven't got the answer yet. And when you go to SLL and you say to them, can we put the press release out? And they say, can we just wait until we've spoken to our staff? Because there, there is vitally important, that is vitally important, that they are told before it's out on, yeah, you appreciate that. So that, that is why it's taken us, it's been so difficult. It has been so difficult because there are so many interested parties in the decision. But we have been working as far, as hard as we can in order to get to the point where we are today. And the fact we are here now, talking to you, illustrates the strength of feeling that we have with regards to the way that you are feeling. And we are taking notes. I mean, we wouldn't know, you wouldn't know if Wildcamp is, it wasn't for this hearing. So we are here now to listen to your concerns, and that's why we are here. And I can, and I can, I can certainly stress that since November, we have been pushing, it's been so difficult to, for us to get all the information out in, in good time.
I know you don't want people to come back, but the conversation with that press release could have been, we've not found an operator, we want to meet with users to find a solution. But that wasn't what came out last year.
Well, I'm very sorry about that, and I...
I've, I've noted that, because there will be... We have put online that you can't look for savings to make by 27, 28. There will be other very difficult decisions. So having feedback about this, moving forwards though, is absolutely what we need to do, thank you.
I just think it has to be said for the record that to actually find a new provider and to only spend three months on doing it is actually not sufficient. And I'm not surprised that maybe only one bid was received. But that was not my question. Um, what I do want to say is, we were told that actually to have something just based in Oakham and to have one centre of provision was not a good idea and was not of best benefit. If Catmas does close, then the only leisure centre will be one centre, and it will be in Uppingham. So there's no, so there will only be one centre. Please also be advised that not everybody who comes and uses Catmas Sports at the moment has their own transport. And many people who come to the centre walk or cycle. Quite a lot of the families who come for the community groups will walk their children there. And at the same time, it allows the adults and parents who have their children in kickboxing or travelling club at the moment can access the gym and the class while their child is already being looked after. And although we could, some of us might be able to, to get over to Uppingham and use the centre there, for the people who haven't got their own transport, the last bus from Uppingham leaves at half past six in the east.
Can I just come in here and say, you're generally saying that you have three second, I don't think I mean that, three secondary schools. We don't have a secondary school anymore here because it's been taken over as an academy. So you are, your hands are tied, whereas Uppingham can use their community college, Casterton can use their community college, but we always have to go through to Mr. Williams. And this is where it was very, very wrong for them to ever have been made into an academy. Because I've run a badminton class with twenty odd people since two hundred and five in Catmas before it was taken over as an academy. Now, as soon as it's taken over as an academy, you, you can't just say that the headmaster will run it, as they did then. And we just booked it, paid the lady up, there was no problem at all. But once it was an academy, you then got all these people in, SLL, do we really need a gym with all those bicycles? We want to say, for older people, they are, there is nowhere in Oakham to play badminton, walking football, walking tennis, there is nowhere except the public, Oakham Public School. And that's where the fault is, we don't have a community college like Uppingham and Casterton. And I think we need to look at that very seriously.
On the, on the categorisation, I think you're right in saying that both Casterton and UCC are academies, just, just for point of accuracy. Catmas College, Mr. Williams made very clear that he has ambitions for the community group and club access. Those conversations are ongoing, and that is about the council supporting and enabling that to happen.
Sorry, thank you. A little gentleman. Can I just say, Rachel May Rea pointed where she said that Catmas is a community. I can say, all right. I can say that I had a really low moment at the end of the school term and very nearly quit my job. My head teacher really wanted to say, sign me off. And what kept me going, and has meant that I am still a teacher, is my Catmas family and the community that kept us together. Now, I would have been at Burton on the NHS at that point, I would have been at my doctors. Honestly, I was at that point where my family worried about me, my friends were worried about me, my teacher, my teacher colleagues, my head teacher were all really worried about me. And it was, they, they felt safe in the knowledge that my friends at the gym were what was skewed for me. So my question is, what are we, where are we going to go? Where, you, you've said these provisions, and I get that, but there's nine hundred of those. I can't take them all with us, we, we're going to lose that. And therefore, you're going to have individually a huge number of people who are going to need some mental health support that they were getting from the gym. And there is nowhere for us to get that feeling other than Catmas.
And firstly, I'm, I'm really pleased that you are still teaching. And thank you so much for sharing that story, because I appreciate that that would have taken a lot, so thank you very much. What I would note is the strength of community in this room would suggest that there will be many ways to be collaborating and moving forward.
And clearly, a point was mentioned earlier that we're very lucky in Rutland. I think that was about some of the schools that are available. But equally in that, we're also very lucky that we've got a lot of kids under the age of sixteen who are playing sport at an elite level, somewhere at national level, whether or not that's cricket, hockey. There's some kids at Catmas that actually go to play at Leicester Tigers and in the academy on there. And they all use Catmas Gym to train together at night time as part of a community as well, to actually share a lot of the stuff that's actually happened from a sport perspective. And I just think removing that facility, an option to do that, is very short sighted, and it's actually stopping the future athletes that we've actually got and a pathway for them actually go to play national sport.
I think you're referring to the sports scholarship programme at Catmas.
My son plays, my son plays hockey for England. He basically goes to a lot, with a lot of kids who play sport at a different level. They go to the gym at night time and actually in mornings and evenings. And removing the ability to do that removes their ability to actually do fitness, but also from a community perspective as well.
Yeah, so, so I'll just, I'll just pick up on, sorry, you mentioned the sports scholarship programme. That's obviously a programme run by the... The elite facilities, as I have mentioned earlier this evening, there are other private gyms with the same access in Oakham.
It's not, it's not the sports scholarship programme at Catmas, it's about using the gym and being in community together, actually using the gyms to, to exercise. Have you taken that along?
Thank you for that clarification. Sorry, you keep talking about zero cost and you keep talking about reducing costs. Have you taken into consideration the cost it is going to have on the mental health facilities in this area? And the alcohol abuse facilities in this area, and our doctors, of which I've already mentioned, we can't get through to? And the cost it's actually going to increase for those facilities? So I'll give you a figure to just show you where local government is at. I'm taking us out of Oakham, I am taking us out of Rutland, and I'm taking us to local government. The total funding gap for twenty three, twenty four for local government is three point four billion pounds. Every single council is looking at how it copes with massive increasing costs to deliver fundamentals such as daily, weekly bin collections, fortnightly bin collections. It is absolutely, and I'm sure councillor Harvey may want to say something about the adult social care, our special educational needs. What you've talked about, I absolutely, and I speak as somebody who absolutely has relied on sport and community through my life to keep my head above water. This is a bigger picture than just Oakham and just Rutland. It is about a local government that actually really needs central government to sit up and look at how we work our way through this. Local Government Association has, has identified that forty percent of council areas will lose their leisure centres or see reduced services by March of this year. Seventy four percent of council areas are classified as unsecured. So they are at risk of closure or reduced service by March twenty four. BBC, three hundred and fifty leisure centres, pools and gyms across the UK have either closed temporarily or permanently. The point I'm making, and councillor Oxy has made this point, this decision is utterly, utterly horrible to make. But we, oh, no, it wouldn't be my question. So I was...
We've got all these housing developments here. I moved to Rutland because there's a local facility. I ditched all the private facilities that I've had in Lethbridge, and there were so many. None of them had a sense of community at Catmas, and that's the only reason I brought a fair way home here. And you've got the silver money from Bellway because of that. And you've got a load of other housing developments coming in. Right, we've got, we've got a leisure, leisure facility here, let's move there. What are they all going to do?
Yes, so...
This question is for councillor Harvey. So we know that we are fortunate to live in Rutland, where we have a... So we know that we are fortunate to live in Rutland, where we have a higher than average life expectancy rate. We also know that is really important, that whilst we're living longer, we need to live longer, healthier. We know how much leisure and sport and the facilities that we've got at Catmas can help us to do that. And I just want to draw a point on about loneliness and going back to my campaign partner around isolation and mental health. I don't suppose any of you will know that there's good research out that says loneliness is as dangerous to you as smoking fifteen cigarettes a day. So what are you going to do to help the people in this room? And there is many of them who will undergo social isolation, that use the centre specifically for their mental health and their isolation, not necessarily about their physical wellbeing, it's more about mental health and social connections. So what are you going to do about that? Because I'll tell you something, this is prevention. And what you're doing is you are going, you are going to run the risk of years to come where you're going to have already stretched services, further stretch of mental health, weight management, drugs and alcohol and the like. What are you going to do? So that's the portfolio holder for health and wellbeing. Who I have to say, I'm ashamed that somebody who holds that portfolio thought it was decent and right to vote to close. That much more, much needed and much wanted percentage of that.
Thank you. I know people are going to support my decision. I'm a portfolio holder for Rutland though, and whilst I do really appreciate the community you have at the gym. Unfortunately, it was a really, really difficult decision. And some decisions are really, really hard. We can, and this is the thing, when you look at the leisure needs analysis, which as you've said, they will accept there were was issues around the fact that there was only five hundred people that responded to that survey. Only twenty-four, twenty-four percent used Catmas in that survey. But one thing, one issue, I suppose, went for the leisure needs analysis, was it looked at all the provision in the accounting. Obviously, at the time, the big news was over the issues around the swimming pool because it wasn't commercially viable or viable to do that up. And what it did say, we provided sports halls and things that we were actually over prescribed in the area, bizarrely, and you can read it, they judge it on badminton courts. I've no idea why, but they judge it on badminton courts. We had far too many. But the one thing it did, if you read the report, it does say, it does say, we had far too many. It's how many, what? It's bizarrely, it's bizarrely the amount of badminton courts per person that they measure it on, and that's what Sports England actually measures for me in community. I don't, it's Sport England that had that up, and I know it's slightly strange. What, the two things I can take from it was. What they did, yes, what they did was the use of the sports hall, the sports halls, there was no over demand, there was, we had too many. But it did rely, it does claim state, it does rely on access to school facilities. So obviously, when, think back to where Catmas was built, it was a community college. There was access, the idea of Catmas was different to when it was academised. And obviously, during academisation, the buildings went straight over to the academy. What we can do from this point forward, we have to, we have to look forward. We have to create something together to move forward.
When you haven't answered my question around isolation and mental health, you haven't answered what you're, what you consider. Because what you're actually doing, yes, it affects us now, all of us, everybody in this room now. But it's not now or next week or next month or next year. It's in five years' time, it's in ten years' time. And what we're doing is actually, you're taking away a facility. That's actually about prevention. That, us engaging is about prevention. It is about not being a burden on the NHS, not being a burden on our GP surgery. You know, if you've got some older, older people, we know that sport is absolutely key and critical in around trips, slips and falls.
Yeah, and we have, we have to.
So what you're going to do is you are going to increase your adult, you keep going on about your adult social costs, they're going to, they're going to be increasing because people will be falling over, tripping over, slipping over in their own homes, and there will be new cat.
And we spoke to a lady, in this whole process, we've spoken to so many people, we, you know, the people in this room, we have spoken to many people. We spoke to a lady, not that long ago, who was in St John's Mercy when we did a photo there. And she'd come over from Catmas Sports Centre, and she said the only reason she'd come over, and the only reason that she was at Catmas Sports Centre, she was part of an exercise referral programme. That exercise referral programme at Catmas Sports Centre, which allowed her to walk, by the way, not great at Uppingham, it allowed her to walk there, and it has allowed her to become independent and no longer require a hip replacement.
The exercise referral scheme is through the public health scheme. And actually, you're right, it does work really, really good for some, it's a Rutland-wide scheme. And whilst it does work fantastically for people in Oakham who can walk to the centre or get to the centre, if you're a Rutlander living in Ryle or Petton or some of our outer villages.
No, when you move to a village, you choose to move into a village without a gym close by. You make that decision when you buy your house there. And that's not what I did. I moved here because it had that facility here. I have been referred because of the lottery increases. I do seven classes a week, so where am I going to go? Are you going to give me a little room where I can sit down on a chair and do some chair yoga? I need more than that. I need my weights, I need classes, I need the mental stimulation, and I need the social aspect of it. You've taken it all away for something that is there, that any fear of you might have, and you can get these. You said you didn't want to put the importance on one place. That one place is giving so much to so many.
I can only reiterate, we didn't set out to not procure a partner to help run it. We didn't, that wasn't the aim of it. The human process started two years ago. It didn't, the actual tender window is three months, but prior to that, there was two years before. Because, because of.
Which doesn't spend three months putting a bid together to apply for something like this, when the outline doesn't say it's going to be nil. You don't spend three months putting a bid together if you know that you're not going to be able to meet requirements.
In that, in that time that we went through that bid, the cost of living crisis started, inflation started going up, and energy costs, as I said previously, have gone up nearly two hundred and forty percent. No, it's not, it's real.
They've suggested it, and it's a suggestion, it's a prediction. And what I've, no, what I've asked is those leisure facilities, did they include swimming pools? Because swimming pools do cost a lot more to live.
And very recently, Bank England suggested that we are now at a point of peak recession, and we are about to come out of it. We are, it will be a slow process, absolutely no doubts about that. But energy costs are going to start to come down. You have faced all of this analysis on that we're still going to be in recession in ten years, in one year, in two years' time. And I don't understand your risk analysis and your approach to your risk analysis that was done. And I'd like to know, who's got a crystal ball?
If, if Rutland County Council is a profit business, the risks that you've outlined in the crystal ball that would be really helpful if we all had, I think that would be a different situation. This isn't, this is public money. Forty-one thousand people in Rutland, all households paying council tax. What is coming through though is clearly Oakham absolutely needs to be working together to look at what they need in that respect. And can I point out, somewhere like Uppingham has had to do that for years. They didn't have a hopper bus service and said, oh, Oakham's got one. And I said, well, Oakham's actually a lot bigger than you. They've now got a hopper bus service. Oakham, Oakham, Uppingham said, oh, Rutland County Council, is there any chance that you can put on youth provision, a youth centre? No, because the budget's been cut. What we can do is offer professional advice. Uppingham have got a head, they've got lottery grant funding, and they now have a youth centre. My point, and I absolutely appreciate when you feel that you are having something taken away. Obviously, you're going to be angry, obviously, you are going to not want that decision to be taken. My point is that actually, there are ways to work together as a community whereby those provisions can be done, and there are a lot of models of that in Rutland. Uppingham, I have cited as one example.
So can I just, can I just answer the question about the procurement process? Once again, I go back to the procurement process. As I, as I said before, there are three, if I quote Lady Diner, Princess Di, there were three people in her marriage, there are three people in that contract. There's SLL, there's the VCC, and there is Rutland County Council. VCC own the building, they own the building, they have a contract, I can't go into too much detail. I know everybody's going to laugh. They have a contract with an energy provider, okay? And what they do is, at the end of each year, they send the bill to us, which we then give to SLL, and SLL pays the energy costs, okay? When it came to the procurement process, we had sixteen bidders, as mentioned, we had sixteen people expressing interest. Seven of those went on to, they came down and had a look at the building, and they spoke about all the, everything which would come out of it. The one thing, we weren't able to give them all the information because there was still ongoing negotiations between those three entities, the VCC, Rutland County Council and SLL. We couldn't give them all the information. And I, I feel that that could potentially have been the reason why we only got them one bidder. And it was so frustrating, I can tell you, frustrating with a capital S, because at the end of the day, I don't want to be sitting here explaining to you all why we couldn't carry on with being sports colleges.
I believe it's true. Can I just add, you only want me to be responsible for that? Have a moratorium, keep it going for another six months or a year, and go to the address where you think was wrong with the contract.
It's, again, we have to be so careful, again, because of commercial sensitivities. We cannot offer. No, 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 we cannot offer a particular company just out of the blue, as has been suggested, that they carry it on without going back to the re-pro procurement process, which costs fifty thousand pounds, as mentioned previously.
Will the facility be totally free to the council going forward? Is it going to be one hundred percent free to the council going forward?
We actually were straight, I know, we're straight into commercially sensitive information.
So, obviously, Catmas has made a decision as advised by recommendation, a formal recommendation, scrutiny, that the cost of leisure provision should be at nil cost. What we are currently working through with Catmas College is how we support them to deliver on their ambitions for delivering that. There are 106 monies, which in these would not have an impact on our revenue budget, which is what the nil cost was. It was not about our day-to-day living expenses.
Ask a question about it.
You haven't answered the question, have you? I mean, without any, I mean, the commercialities in the figures, I'm not asking you the figures, I'm speaking of principle.
So the decision was around nil cost of our revenue budget. So we're looking at our revenue budget, we have obviously our capital investment budget, which includes 106, and so I will just take a question now.
Please do, please do answer this gentleman first, and then I'd like to ask my question.
It's not, it's not sensitive, it's actually a very simple question. Is it going to cost you money?
It would, it would have cost the stuff.
I need the microphone, so they can hear you online, they can hear you online.
He's asked, is it going to cost Rutland County Council to effectively build it to stand empty? That's not commercially sensitive, that's a really honest, positive, honest answer.
The building is not going to stand empty. It will, it will carry on being used. VCC own the building.
But it costs everyone the capital and that. Will it cost the planning crews the money going forward?
Can I just answer that, which, as has been said, the academy owns the building, we have a head lease and a weekly track to Stephenish Leisure up to the thirty-first of March. That contract with Stephenish Leisure was coming to an end. From that point, we're now in negotiations with Catmas College about how that will go forward in terms of the schools that will be using that facility. So we're talking about the community access outside that period of time. So we're in negotiations with the college about the cost of that going forward. So I have to say.
Right now, you don't know the cost? So right now, you don't know the cost going forward?
No, we're negotiating. We have put money aside in the budget, and that is a subject of emergency. So, yeah, but if I could just say as well, whichever point this had happened, we would be in the same position. If we were looking at it this time, next year, the year after, we would still be in the same position.
So my question's about public health. I'm a doctor and Catmas Gym user. So we know that physical activity is fantastic for both physical and mental health. Indeed, we've heard some very powerful stories this evening. How is this decision in any way compatible with the responsibilities the council has for public health? And indeed, compatible with your own health and wellbeing strategy?
Thank you. Obviously, our director of public health isn't here. What we would say is that in discussions with our public health team, actually, within Rutland, we have an issue with some of our residents who are reluctant to exercise. Those, those residents who are.
They're called the hard to reach.
They are, they are.
People like this around us in this room will help those people. They draw them in, and having this great facility is fantastic. To draw those people, to help them be more active, closing it is absolutely hideous for this community.
The, the public health stance, as I said in my piece, is for active, active, sustainable lives. And, and that is their, they, their stance and their policies help us to be active and less sedentary throughout our whole life, not just in one facility.
A policy does not stop you or does not enable you to be active. You're creating a barrier to people to be active. a barrier to people to be active. I myself, this lady spoke about her issue, you know, and the fact that sports centre helped her. For myself, I've only been going the last few months, I, you know, I needed to do something, and I knew that I needed to do something, but it takes a long time, this is post-COVID, a long time, with everything that's happened in COVID, for me to actually get off the sofa and go and do something about it, to put, to close the centre. So, you know, I've been here for a few years, and I'm not used to Catness Sports Centre, my kids have, but the point is, it's there, and when people do need it, they're able to access it. If it hadn't been there, they'd probably still be sat on the sofa. I wouldn't have gone to Uppingham, because it's harder, it makes it harder if there's not a facility there on your doorstep. I think the reason why I actually put my hand up before though, was to, to question the budget part again, and the money, because I also on Monday, or last Monday at the budget meeting, what was the three hundred thousand pounds that's set aside for Catness Sports Centre next year? And I believe I was told, yep, that it was for dilapidations. I'm now wondering whether it's actually to pay for the electricity for the college to continue to run and to use that facility. Am I correct?
No, it's not. It, it's there to wind, to wind the contract up, basically. It's, it's not costing that money, it's money that's just been set aside. It, it's not costing that money.
Can I also ask then, we were talking about the four point nine million spend that you guys need to save, I don't understand why you're trying to save, make that savings with something that costs you very little. Out of the entire budget, I've looked at the budget, I've looked at it thoroughly, I've spent two hours looking at it, I've never looked at it before, in the whole time I've lived here, but because of what you're doing, you are forcing us to look into the minutiae, you're forcing us to look at everything that you're doing, and we will not stop looking at that. You're spending four hundred and eighty-eight thousand pounds on museum services. You've talked about the sports centre being a luxury. I'm sorry, I, I, I'm quite happy that there's a lot in the museum, but I did not realise that we were spending that amount of money every year, compared to you spent four hundred thousand pounds on Catness Sports Centre over the last ten or twelve years. You're spending that money every year on museum services, you're spending half a million pounds on the library. I mean, I did use the library, but I didn't realise that that was the cost to us.
We, we have got to save four point nine million pounds, that's, that's a given.
So why are you targeting the source of that?
If you just let me finish.
Your G set finance portfolio, I'll see you and then sure you'll have supplementary.
At the, at the moment, we are undertaking a transformation programme, which will take about four years to deliver, and we're looking at the whole of the council, not, not, not just the leisure services, the museum, our assets, this building, we're looking, totally looking across the whole of it. And all those little three hundred thousands here, fifty K there, um, it all adds up, and it's all got to add up to that four point nine million that will make us balance our budget in four years' time.
Okay, I understand that, but I feel that you've made this decision about the leisure centre without looking at everything in a whole. You could have extended the contract for another year, you could have extended the contract for one year, have one year's risk, and have used money, use the three hundred thousand pounds that's gonna be used to wind it up, considering it's only cost you a hundred thousand pounds this year, maybe with electricity bills, I don't know, I'm saying maybe two hundred thousand pounds next year, but that is still within the three hundred K that you've set aside for the sports centre. I do not understand why you could not have extended it for a year and then made this decision alongside everything, and we as the people of Rutland, not just Oakham, could make an informed choice as to what we're spending our money on.
Because if we, um, didn't spend the three hundred thousand now, we're not saying it's three hundred thousand, as I say, it's just money that's set aside, we'd need to run the leisure centre maybe for another year, and then we'd still have another three hundred thousand at the end of it. So we're just increasing our costs.
There would only be a three hundred thousand pounds in another year if you were to close it. In another year's time, you might have been able to go, the cost would have come down from the utilities, you might have wanted to go through the procurement process again, because you could see the strength of feeling from Rutlanders that actually we want a sports centre, and if you close it, it will never reopen. It is better to keep something going at a minimal cost than to lose it forever.
Unfortunately, I haven't got this lady's crystal ball, and I don't know what's going to be happening in years' time.
I've got two questions, please. First one, no, first, first one's a first one to know. So, um, I'm sorry for the confusion to that lady, but I took early retirement, and the gym saved me, and I wrote and told them, and my doctor, and, um, I think you need to understand that we talk about nine hundred members, but there's also a lot of ad hoc people, okay? There's lots of little old ladies that live down by our road, who go for odd sessions and pay seven ninety-five a time. And my husband and I, we have to find the money to pay for our membership, okay? And I can't even understand my car, I have a bike, and if you'd said to me, you're gonna have to double what you pay, I would have found that money to pay it to go, okay? It's that important. I don't want holiday, I had to take early retirement, and I don't think you understand that most of the people I meet are not from Oakham. I, I stand in the gym on a Sunday morning at half past day, and the lady next to me comes from Uppingham, and she's leaving there at ten to eight in the morning or whatever to get in at half past day to do that gym session, okay? And for me, I can't go anywhere else, so that's personal to me. So why didn't you say, this is gonna run at a loss? I understand completely, truly I do, we have the highest council tax in the country. I could have a twenty-four million pound house in Westminster and be paying half the council tax I'm doing at the minute, but I choose to live here. I've just had the bill through, my green bin's gone from thirty to thirty-five to forty to forty-five, and now fifty pounds now to come twice a week, and not in February, to take my green bin away. And I said, I'd rather not pay the green bin, I'd want to pay that money to go to the gym, but I didn't get the choice. Why is it that I'm worried about SLL? I'm sorry for the employees, because my second question is related, it's related, so I'll bring them together. Do you realise that sixty-eight percent of the current classes happen before seven thirty in the morning, and after five thirty at night, and at weekends? And I don't understand, you're extolling the virtues of Mr Williams, I don't know the man. I'm an ex-head teacher, I'm an ex-schools inspector, I wrote to you, Mark, you didn't answer my email, I've been in the school, I've begged this perceptionist as a friend. Can I speak to Mr Williams? And I don't think Mr Williams is doing a good thing not speaking, people will be slapping him off. He's sitting on the site, he's got eight new classes built, and I understand he needs to turn tables children into that environment, I understand that, but why can't, we all get together with him, and why can't we organise that we can still have those classes in the morning, it's the same children who are doing the lessons, and after, when the children are long gone. Last Friday night, I was there at half past five, six o'clock, dropped my husband off, when I come back to pick him up, there isn't a single light on in the school, it's not a child protection or safeguarding issue or anything like that. Why is it that we didn't think, not let's just shut that for the adults and the children who wanna go to trampoline, and the old people who go to the badminton? Why at the beginning wasn't this Mr Williams who was so marvellous, walked into this? I don't understand, because he's going to have to balance his books, and if he's got this only five million budget or whatever, surely he could make a lot of money, and, and you also have to appreciate, staff at that gym used to work at the school, they were two, it was years ago, long before SLL. It was a community thing, there's a, there's a public benefit. Okay, sorry, it's two long questions, but I'm interested.
Yes, I will answer your question, and I have asked that question. Um, SLL are the people who are running the centre, they are the ones who decide what the, uh, money will be in order to take part in the activities that they're organising there. And we have no control over that, and I was, I mean, I cannot comment, I mean, in too much detail, but I was surprised at where I heard how much it was, and it hadn't actually gone up. That's another story, that's, that's, that's a self. SLL's business decision, we have no control over it. And I have been on the council since two thousand and three, so I remember when we were asked about the money to build the big build, and I was one of the ones who stuck my hand up to build the big build, and I remember what was gonna go into the big build with the art centre and the cafe and everything else, and it's all gone, it's all gone, I know. But when the school became an academy, they had say over who could go onto the site, they had say over what time everybody could go onto the site. This is what I'm saying about three different people in the, in the, uh, decision. And, no, I'm, I'm talking to this lady here, thank you.
Talking to what?
No, I'm talking, I'm answering this lady's question. Yeah, okay, so, so what I'm trying to say is that it is very difficult when you have three people in the room, when you're making, trying to make a decision, and one of them is concerned about, openly concerned about their, uh, students, one of them is trying to run the business, and one of them is trying to, uh, trying to keep the health of the council active and open. So all I want to say is, from day one, it was an excellent idea, and where we are now, we have been, fuck, we found, we find ourselves in this position. And I have asked, as a portfolio holder, I have asked that every single sports club in the county is given the opportunity to publish their, uh, details, their contact details, up-to-date contact details that you'd be able to find on the, on the, um, Rutland Information Service. So that, and a lot of those clubs are in Oakham, there are a lot of, we have seventy-seven listed, seventy-seven listed clubs and activities in Rutland. And so I'm hoping that this could actually, we, I want, I want to see as much community activity still going on at Catness, I, I want to see that, but, but it is down to the college, and we are negotiating with them now as we speak, we are openly negotiating with them.
So it's political, it's not financial then?
It's, it's everything, it's, it's political, it's financial, it's, it's everything.
So the, so obviously, as we've said in press releases, we are, um, we've had a long working relationship with Catness College, we are in negotiations with Catness College about that access, and I'd like to thank you for sharing very, very clearly the elements that are really, really important, and I also understand the one united voice, I'm sure you've been noticing I have been rapidly, um, taking down notes, and clearly that will, um, help as we move forwards.
You're gonna stop building houses then, aren't you? Because there's no sense in building houses if you don't provide levels.
Well, mine was gonna wanna move it, I was not willing to do it.
It's a relatively housing population due to that. And the way you... The strategy is all the talk.
So what is your strategy, can you tell us?
We want us to drive through the places, pass the health...
What about that stuff?
...of the environment. Do you have any general strategy?
So, um, in terms of the, so, uh, specifically on the housing and the SIL, is that does link into SIL contributions and facilities. In December, as, um, uh, councillor Powell mentioned, we have a paper with indicative funding amounts for different areas, including...
I'm sorry, but...
Um, do you want to come on that one?
Lots of different questions there, the whole, we do have strategies, we've thought we've started off with our FISA, and then our corporate strategy, so we're very clear what our strategies are. There are lots of things, uh, we, we're producing a new local plan, we don't have, we cannot say we'll have no more houses in this county, that is just not, we, we can't do that in terms of government targets, et cetera, so there's lots of things in that question. Um, so the strategy is, and as I've said, we do get money from developers, and that's what we're actually looking to use to actually improve infrastructure as, as building, um, increasing...
I understand you've got, uh, operating, you know, it's been ironic, really, building houses creates demand.
Yeah.
Well, the real thing's gotta demand on, and it's just the way that the way things work. Um, and it's been this way for a long, long time, sport and leisure, um, and look, I don't wanna lose the museum, but if you're eyes are off, you know, you've got a way of usage, sure, and I'm not, you know, saying three spurs and, uh, and this thing about, yeah, but we've got lots of villagers, a lot of villagers haven't got a castle, you know, and it, it, some money has to go into the castle because it's where it is. That's understandable, if you can't use that as an argument, oh, we get lots of money. It's about, this is about usage, it's about, uh, utility, it's not, um, about spending on fabric, which I want you to stop spending on the castle, and, and I accept that to make the same. But in the same deal, we might be prepared to pay just more, but the way you've done it, you shut all the doors, um, and that's, and even you said the decision was in open discussion. So it really, you might say, why the hell are you having this week in the first place? And I think that the first thing you should have done, and I apologize for the way you went to that place, and any grief you're in now, you're attracted to, and, but we've gotta go forward, so I think you really need to get your heads together again, if some people will feel the same way, will you, and see what can be done. You cannot, if this goes through at the end of March, well, I think you have failed. Totally failed.
We are talking about increasing facilities within Oakham, if you keep a leisure centre in Oakham, you increase your footfall on the high street, which allows more independent shops, more independent businesses, more chains to come to our high street, so that we can have a better high street. If you increase the leisure facilities, that increases people into Oakham. That's human geography, it's basic geography degree level, in fact, A-levels, go and ask my GCSE daughter, um, her view on it, because she'll absolutely understand what human population and human geography is.
So the, um, and it is in the FAQs, and please double check, but we have sixty thousand, um, visitors that come for the museum and castle, so in terms of footfall, that is a big footfall, and that brings visitors in. One of the questions actually from the Monday consultation was around, um, declining high streets, et cetera, and actually your point about having a, an holistic approach to it, because actually it's not just a leisure centre, it's not just a castle or a museum, it is actually the whole town and Harabat is working and what that is for the whole picture, not just, not just obviously people coming from outside the county to visit us, but also people coming in and enjoying market days, the independent traders, et cetera. Um, councillor Payne has already mentioned the transformation work, and I think part of that has to be around how we have those conversations moving forwards, because what this council will be like in twenty-seven, twenty-eight will be very, very different. You can't take four point nine million pounds out for an organisation for it to be the, the same.
So I've got a question, you keep talking to us about alternatives for the gym users, for the clubs, et cetera, et cetera, there's plans being put in place for the clubs, which is fantastic. So, I attend thirteen classes a week, and I go to the gym at least four times a week. Where do I go on the first of April? Directly to a website, tell me where I go.
I, I've looked at the website they direct us to, and I've searched, and it comes up with, um, Oakham Credit Club, six to fifteen-year-olds, a three-day experience.
It is being updated, it is being updated. It is being updated, and we're asking...
That point is taken.
That point is taken.
Yeah.
I'd like to ask, um, how much of the decision was forced by the need to expand Catness, um, campus, because I, I wonder if, um, the person who's in charge of running the academy seems to have an awful lot of, um, saying what goes on, and maybe he wants to clear the space to expand his, um, campus a little bit more.
Right, uh, the, these are two completely unrelated decisions, um, there was a very careful analysis done on, um, where school expansion could, could happen, Catness came out, and obviously... Catmas came out and obviously received £5.5 million. Please, can I absolutely underscore that this was a decision taken by this council? Catmas College are simply the landlord owning the building. So I understand where that suggestion might come from. But I hope that that reassures you that your concerns are completely unaccounted on that.
I have one question for councillor Harvey. Do you agree that physical and mental health will deteriorate because of this decision? And for the people who cannot want to go anywhere else, their mental health and physical health will deteriorate? So where would they go if they wanted to carry on?
As I said, change is always difficult. It's not, it's not the case that other places are more expensive. There are some places that are the same price. It depends, it genuinely depends what you do. I don't know what exercise is. No, no, Open School, there's parts of Open Schools offering which is cheaper. Which is why I said, I don't know what exercise you're taking. The gym at Open School is cheaper than your currently paying.
Mr, I think we've got time. Two more questions.
Shall I ask my question? I've got a chronic medical condition and Catmas is a lifeline for me, just to give context as to why I'm here. You talk about having conversations, we need to have more conversations to move forward. But how much weight do those conversations actually have to the decisions that you make? This is an extract from the Future Rutland Shared Vision on Health and Well. So leisure and recreation create opportunities to have fun, socialise, which adds to the richness of life and brings people and communities closer together. People in Rutland will be able to access a wide range of leisure opportunities for all ages, abilities and interests. The county's exciting leisure offer will promote the important role that sport and exercise play in maintaining healthy minds and bodies. So we talked to you in the Future Rutland Conversation. Most people that feel that we're from Oakham, over 35%, but how are you giving us confidence that having these conversations going forward actually helps in the decisions that you're making? If I made my point there.
You've made your point very clearly and very articulately. Thank you. The Future Rutland Vision is a 50-year vision because we acknowledge that within it, you are not going to deliver on those ambitions overnight. The corporate strategy, which is also on the Future Rutland website, that has a two-year delivery plan and it looks at how we prioritise things. And that is worth having a look at. And the one thing that I am going to say this evening, which does need to be said. Leisure for a lot of people in Rutland isn't just going to a gym facility. I absolutely hear that for you in this room, your classes, your sense of community is really, really important to you. And I absolutely hear that. But there are, so the petition, I can't comment on because I don't believe it's been submitted yet. And we're going.
Okay, and we're going to try and first the decision to take to full cabinet. That's the whole point of the petition. And you will not prefer the end of this. We will bring it back to cabinet and we will present our 15 minutes as petition and the statutory guidance as we count.
Oh, I'm not disagreeing. I'm merely saying that I can't comment, I can't comment.
You haven't, for the last of this.
Yeah, that's noted.
Talking, knowing forward. I understood that as us talking, knowing forward. So when does that start? Is that us and you?
Started now.
So what I, so. Yeah, so we are, so what happens at nine o'clock? So I think that I certainly need to speak to your open councillors. I need to speak to your mayor, thank you for coming. Because actually, the working together isn't just about six people on cabinet whose job it is to make decisions for the county. It is also, it is also working with your county councillors.
And us.
Sorry. No, moving, so moving forward. What I'm referring to is moving forwards. Clearly, there is a need for Oakham residents to work absolutely together. I'm highlighting the avenues that you already currently have. It may be that you decide that you need something slightly different. But you have an Oakham Town Council, you have an Oakham Town Partnership, you have an Oakham neighbourhood plan, you have eight county councillors representing you. I'm very happy to meet you at another, at another point, absolutely. But I'm also pointing out that you have other mechanisms within your community that I would also suggest that you need to get those people round the table as well to discuss that. Okay, thus, and that is me endeavouring to be helpful. It is, so I am going to finish this meeting. No, I say, point of order.
Quick point of order. Do you keep going to Oakham? The gym is not just to Oakham.
Correct.
I acknowledge that, but I would suggest in terms of, clearly you have an incredibly active, articulate, organised community. So your point there saying, actually, we're just talking about Oakham. We know that we have people coming from Broadstone or St. Dine or Langham. Then I would suggest again that that is reaching out to those parish councils and to those county councillors as well. So that you are having that conversation and you're looking at.
They've got no input into our decision.
Um, yes, they have. They could, yes, they have. I outlined that. They absolutely had an input into this, twice through scrutiny. Ah, so can I just pick up on that? We have, this was absolutely at capacity. There were 70 seats available. I, so the councillors have had their opportunity to discuss this decision in two lots of scrutiny panels. They could have asked about calling this decision in. This was a meeting for the public to hold the people who have made that decision to account and to answer questions and to find a way moving forward. If you wanted me to fill it up with 27 houses, 27 people wouldn't have been here. Now then, I will take one last comment and then I will.
I appreciate the financial considerations and the commercial sensitivities. But what worries me is the timing. We've only had two months' notice before this is going to close. Can you assure us that arrangement will be made with the school for something to take place from 1st of April? And if not, why can't the closure date be extended?
So both the school and us are very aware of the time sensitivities of 31st of March. As I've already said, we are in negotiations with the school. We have issued a joint statement, but it would be inappropriate for me to put hard lines. But obviously, we are aware of that deadline. I am going to wrap up for this evening. That actually isn't because of not wanting any more challenging questions. All your questions are absolutely valid. There will be, obviously, the FAQs are published on the website. And I would like to thank you for coming. And I would like to thank you to those listening online. We fully appreciate this decision is not one you wanted us to take. We know that many of you would have preferred us to extend the existing contract. We hope at the very least, and clearly you feel there's more questions to answer, we have explained why and how the decision was taken.
And not really, I'm sorry.
So the FAQs are already on the website. One thing I think we can all agree on is that engagement and communication are essential. Rutland, like the rest of the world, is living through what I suspect will be one of the hardest decades of our living memory. A pandemic that saw global lockdowns and unstable Eastern Europe, combined with global inflation and the challenges that come with managing those impacts, will not be resolved tonight. And thank you very much to everybody listening online.